All right, well, good afternoon. I'm assuming people have heard of COVID-19 or the new coronavirus. So, but the presentation today I want to do is give an overview, kind of hit on three areas. One, what is it? Where our response is going to be? And then I'm going to turn the mic over to Dan DeGea to kind of talk about emergency declarations. So, just kind of get this started. Coronaviruses are a common group of viruses that are found in humans and animals. Our common cold is a coronavirus, just so you know. On rare occasions, these viruses will jump from an animal to a human being. And that's what was, that's what they think happened here for the new strain of coronavirus. Just sort of some clarification on the top right corner. You see COVID-19 is the official name of the disease. And SARS-CoV-2 is the official name of the virus. So you can see it's related to the SARS virus from the previous outbreak.
Does that mean it jumped from a...
They believe it did jump from an animal. I think they believe it was a bat, strange or species. The symptoms are very similar to the flu. Fever, cough, shortness of breath. And that's one of the challenges we're finding right now because we're in the peak of flu season. So, kind of teasing out who has flu and who doesn't is going to be a challenge right now. And I'll talk more about that in a minute. How it's being spread? Majority is spread as person to person. You have to be in close contact with a person for a duration of time. It is spread through, when you cough or sneeze, the droplets. Either breathing those in or, you know, touching your mouth if you have your fingers contaminated, getting it into your system. It has to go into your lungs. It's not going to come through your skin or anything like that. There are some, it's possible that people that are, right now, people who are sick are the ones that are most infectious and trans and spreading the disease. It is possible that someone may be asymptomatic, not having symptoms. But it's, that's not necessarily the main way it's being spread at this point. Also, it's possible that you can pick it off off the surface like flu, which can stay on a surface for a limited period of time. But again, that's not seen as being something, the main way of being infected. It's, right now, it's purely person-to-person contact in close proximity. And then how easily it spreads? It spreads easier than flu, and I'll go into that in just a second. And you've heard the term "community spread." Basically, that's a term that means that it's spreading throughout the community, among the individuals who have not had to travel to those particular countries or have had contact with a close positive person. So, the community spread's an important factor that helps trip it into the term pandemic. Right now, person-to-person spread, a new virus strain or, and then community spread are the three factors that, when they determine when to call it a pandemic. It has not been considered a pandemic yet because the community spread is still sporadic in other, it has to be in multiple countries. And it's still sporadic in some of the countries like the US. So, I'm going to throw some epidemiological jargon at you first. We talked about the community transmission. One of the factors that looks at how infectious a disease is is called the R-naught rate. And COVID-2 or COVID-19, the R-naught rate is 2.2. What that means is for, if I was sick, I have, on average, I'm going to infect 2.2 people. So, an R-naught value greater than one means it's, can be readily spread. Less than one, it pretty much kind of dies out on its own. To put it in perspective, the H1N1 virus was an R-naught of 1.4, 1.6. What that means is this one is more infectious. It doesn't mean it's more than severe. It just means it spreads easier. And from the thousands of cases that have come out of China, we know that eight out of 10 people will just have mild symptoms, very similar to the flu.
You have time to report this morning that the leader of China just visited the province where this started, suggesting that maybe things are coming down there.
Yeah, and I have a graph that, I'll show you that in a second, actually. But I wanted to point out that eight out of 10 cases are going to be mild. About 15 to 20% are severe, where they might require hospitalization. It's very similar in terms characteristics of the common flu. The case fatality rate is about 1 to 2%, but that's actually going down as more and more cases of mild cases appear. So, I'll show you that in a minute. So here's the, I don't know how you can see it on the little screen, but this is, as of this morning at 7:00 AM, this is the worldwide case count. You see there's about 115,000 cases worldwide. And the red spots are kind of the hotspots, if you will. Of those cases, about 4,000 have died. And then on the far right, the green number, those are the number of cases that have recovered. And so, to kind of get Jim to your point, if you look at that graphic in the bottom right, the line graphic, the dark yellow line on top is the number of cases in China. And you see that leveling off. The bright yellow line at the bottom are the number of cases outside of China. And we see that going up. But also, the line in the middle, the green one, that's the number of cases that are recovering. And you see that's going up. That's a positive sign. The federal government issues travel requirements or restrictions or advisories. And they're based on what we'll call different levels, two and three countries. China, Iran, South Great Italy, Japan. We use this information, they use this information to screen people at airports. And we use this information if we have a case here to determine quarantine and isolation procedures. So, that information, that's how that information is used. Currently in the US, and that is of about 11 o'clock this morning, there's 647 cases in the United States with 25 deaths, 36 states reporting. In New York State, as of yesterday morning, we have 142 cases. And these are the counties, predominantly in Westchester County and down in the eastern end of the state. We have not had any deaths that I'm aware of.
Eric, do we know what the commonality factor is with deaths to deaths?
Um, the only ones I'm more familiar with are the deaths in the US. They tend to be a lot, several were in the nursing home that was infected. So it's elderly, immune compromised, and people with underlying health conditions. One of the things that did come out of China at least that they're saying is that it's not impacting, it's impacting children, but not as much as other viruses have. So that's a good thing. Children aren't being as affected as much. They are getting it, but not as much. Madison County, this is probably what you really want to know. Madison County, there's no positive cases. We've had no people under investigation or are isolated and quarantined as of today. And hopefully for a while.
Eric, how much, how many testing kits do you have available? Or how many?
Well, the testing is actually done by the providers and the hospitals. And we would help coordinate those and get those sent to the labs. We will, we were going to get some because, I'll go over in a minute. We will be going in the house and we will have the ability to test in the house if need be. But for the, right now, the strategy is to push them out to the providers. I think a lot of people can test now, providers, hospitals. I'm looking to Katie because she's doing...
Private providers can test.
Yeah, private providers can test as well.
And Eric had a face with the hospitals and colleges. We're on a conference call with Eric on Thursday.
Actually, we had a tabletop exercise with them. You're stealing my thunder, John.
Sorry.
Okay. That's okay.
You're doing a...
I want to, I want to give you a comparison because, you know, what's all the hype about COVID-19? So this, this is the end of February of this year.
Thank you, I was waiting for something to do.
Okay, this is the, it's all, I did this for you, Jim. The laboratory reports for flu, as you can see, all the dark counties is where there's cases of flu. So why, flu is widespread in New York State. Also, the last week of February, and I want to kind of highlight the last two bullets in particular, that there's been over 1,200 people hospitalized for flu in New York State as of last week. And that's a decrease of 17% from the week before. So our hospitals are really inundated right now with flu cases. But also, it gives you a sense of how many more flu cases we have than COVID-19 cases. Also, in the last bullet, this flu season, I don't know if you're aware of it, but there's been nine kids that have died from the flu already. So, just keep that in mind with this concept of COVID-19. Where in New York State, 142 people are ill, but no one's died so far. So what to expect? We will eventually have a case here in Madison County. It's inevitable. Right now, the public health threat is high because it's, it's an infectious disease. It's a new disease and it's spreading pretty rapidly. So, the threat is high. The risk is dependent on exposure. As I mentioned, you have to be in close proximity with someone who's positive to be infected, such as healthcare workers or family members who may be caring for someone. Or like the case in Westchester, most of those cases started with, associated with that gentleman, the guy that drove him home, his neighbor, his family members, and then their close contacts. So that's kind of how it's spreading. And for the risk for the general public is still relatively low. So, kind of what have we been doing, public health-wise? We've been pretty much doing this daily since the beginning of the year. Our activities kind of fall in four different areas. Surveillance and monitoring, communications, education, planning exercises, and gearing up for response. Our surveillance, we're daily tracking cases both worldwide nationally and New York State. We're in constant contact with the state health department. We're in constant, we have all the laboratories that do the testing report. We get the lab results, so we'll know if people are tested or come back positive. So we do monitor it that way. We also, we have for the last 10 years, we weekly contact providers' offices, hospitals, and schools, and ask them what types of illnesses they're seeing in their, in their offices. So we already have an active surveillance system in place and have for years. On the communications, public education, I think I live on the phone, or at least in webinars, for the last two months. We're on the phones daily. We're in conference calls daily and webinars with the state. We're also in constant communication with local, key local partners like hospitals and colleges, the school districts. As we get guidance from the federal government and from the state, we turn around, push those out to the, our providers and partners who need those, as well as issue press releases, update our website, and hold different meetings with different, different partners. And planning and exercises, fortunately, we do not have a case now. So most of our activities, we can refine our plans and update those. And we're doing that. We're getting inventories, we're getting inventories from the hospitals and from providers' offices to understand what they have in terms of masks or test kits and things like that. So, we're trying to get that on top of that. And we've been hosting partner tip, partner tip, partner tabletop exercises. As John mentioned, last week, we had the hospitals and the healthcare centers from the colleges and emergency management. We did a tabletop kind of what-if, this person presents, how do we respond? And kind of walk through how we're going to coordinate those activities. We have the same thing tomorrow with all the school districts and the Head Start programs. And then we're scheduling one for next week with some of our key community partners, especially those who interact with the public and do home visits and things like that. So we'll be doing exercises to kind of walk through those scenarios and understand how we're going to coordinate our response activities.
Eric, what are the people that you would be doing the tabletop exercises with, the next level after schools?
Uh, right now, we're looking at community partners. We're trying to define them right now. But for example, I think CAP reached a cap, it would be Liberty Resources, groups like that, that may interact with other, yep. This, and then our response, I mean, we activated, internally, we activated our incident command. And we have about 12 to 15 staff members that are daily working on this. Oh, that lost me. Okay. But since we don't have a case, right now, our response is kind of the planning, intelligence gathering, and tabletop exercises. Should we get a response, we're going to, there's two strategies that we're going to implement. I'm going to talk, go into a little bit more detail about how that would work. Our response strategies, should they come to Madison County, are twofold. And this is not only ours, but this has been for the state and the federal government. It's containment and implementation of non-pharmaceutical interventions. It's a fancy term for non-medical things that we could do to stop, slow the spread of disease. Kind of go over some of the containment strategies, some you may know. Federal government issued the travel restrictions. There's screening through certain airports. If you travel from China, Iran, you're funneled through 11 airports nationally where you're screened. Movement restrictions and monitoring people of high and medium risk. This is where you get into isolating and quarantining people. And then people that may be potentially at risk or are ill, making sure we aggressively get them tested to see if they have it or not. So the goal is really to rapidly identify and limit secondary transmission through these means. I want to go a little bit more, MPI, how come you, MPI is non-pharmaceutical interventions. I'm just going to say MPI because it's too much to say. These are implement, are interventions that were kind of fine-tuned and developed during the H1N1, and they're applicable here. We're talking about a respiratory disease that's spreading. So these are strategies that we are, that individuals as well as communities can take to help slow the spread of the disease. I'm giving this graphic to kind of understand, there is data behind the efficacy of MPIS. And I wanted to kind of show this in a graph. The dark purple bell curve there is if you did no interventions or no MPIS, what you would see was a rapid increase in cases and a large impact on our healthcare and hospital infrastructure. With the introduction of MPIS, you really flatten out. You delay the growth of those cases, which allows us to provide more time to prepare. It also allows us time to develop a vaccine or medical, medicine, medical treatments. But also, in this unique situation, we're at the peak of flu season, as I mentioned. It allows us to get through flu season. And hopefully, some of the hospitals won't be caring for so many flu patients where they'll be able to handle COVID-19 cases. Eases the demand on the healthcare system and the public health infrastructure, or the public health system and infrastructure, and hopefully reduces the overall number of cases. So there's data to back up. These strategies are effective. And their, MPI strategies are category, there's three categories. There's personal, and you've probably heard this ad nauseam, at least since you're probably a child, to wash your hands. I mean, believe it or not, 80% of diseases can be successfully prevented if you just wash your hands. And I'm talking, I'm not talking a hand sanitizer. I'm talking warm soap and water for 20 seconds. I mean, that's, that's simple. Respiratory etiquette, you know, sneeze in your sleeve or cover your mouth when you cough or sneeze. Stay at home when you're sick. I mean, I guess common sense is relative, but it's basic common sense. And if you're sick, use a face mask. One of the things I want to emphasize, masks are not for people who are well. It's for people who are sick. And the reason being is if they cough or sneeze, the mask captures it. If you wear a mask and you're well, you're getting a false sense of security that it's protecting you, and it's not. So, plus, also, we have a shortage on masks. And our healthcare providers and the individuals who are sick are going to need them. So, we highly emphasize that unless you're sick, you do not need a mask. There's community strategies, school closures, postponing or canceling mass gatherings, social distancing, and for like workplaces, be thinking of things like telecommuting and working at home. And the social distancing, we're very fortunate to be a rural county. We're already kind of social distanced already. But that's to our benefit to be a rural county. And then the environmental strategies are basically cleaning protocols. And right now, normal basic cleaning protocols will, will take care of this or are effective against this virus. How we will know if someone shows up in Madison County? One of four ways. As I mentioned earlier, if they travel to China or Iran, they will be screened at the airport. If they are positive when they come into the country, they will be directed to a medical facility for treatment and testing. If they are asymptomatic or having no symptoms, they'll be allowed to travel to their final destination. So they'll arrive in Madison County. We will be notified by the state of those individuals. Because of being screened at the airport, that information will be captured and sent to us. And those instances, we'll be reaching out them to self-quarantine. We also have traveler, people just might be traveling on their own. We have student, we have spring break coming up.
Yeah, I was thinking about that.
So, they may be traveling on their own and coming back. And they may notify us that they were traveling in one of these countries. The initial case in New York City, the 39-year-old woman that was in Iran, who was a healthcare worker, actually self-quarantined herself and reported it. So that's kind of how that happened. We have the returning students. I know for the SUNY students, the state's going to let us, give us a list of names of those students, as well as the, all the colleges will be. I know the state asked the colleges to provide them information so that we can get it in turn. And then the least, my least favorite will be if just someone shows up at the hospital or provider's office sick. So, that's how we're going to find out. Our main action at that point, when someone shows up in the community, our main action will be isolation and quarantine. I want to step back a second, just kind of go over some of the legal aspects aside of isolation, quarantine. Federal, state, and local authorities have different levels of isolation and quarantine authorities. Feds is to prevent disease spread between countries, in and out of the country, between states. And it ends there. States and locals have their authorities over their own jurisdictions for isolation and quarantine. Just quick definition, quarantine means separating or restricting movement of a person who's been exposed but is not sick. Where isolation is someone who is separated, who is sick. The state, of course, has then added another definition to that. We'll go over in a minute to make it more complicated than that. And then the goal of that is just to keep ill or potentially help people separate from the rest of the people. So, to kind of reduce the transmission of the disease. In New York State public health law, me as the public health director and the board of health have the authority to isolate and quarantine individuals in our county. This public health order, we're allowed to isolate persons, places, or things if a site's contaminated, for instance. It also allows us to get them medical examinations and treatment. We can order them to do that. And there's some basic information that are contained in those orders. We're actually meeting with the court on Friday. We've met with the county attorneys. We're meeting with the court on a Friday to finalize the court order process.
Yeah, aesthetic therapy treatment, there's not any particular drugs.
There isn't, but that's part of the, that would be incorporated in the court order. If, and when that comes available, I could order that too.
Okay. There it goes.
Correct. So this is the state's definitions of quarantine and isolation. They've added a mandatory quarantine and a precautionary quarantine. So, a mandatory quarantine is someone who's been in close contact within six feet of someone who's positive, but is not displaying symptoms for COVID-19, or a person who's traveled to one of those high-risk countries and is displaying the symptoms of COVID-19. So they will be mandatory quarantine. Individual who is positive will be mandatory isolated. In both of those cases, mandatory isolation and quarantine, the county health department will be issuing a court order for that. For precautionary quarantine, they've traveled to one of those places but are not showing any symptoms. They, they may have come into contact with someone who was positive. This could be like if they're in a church setting or something, that someone in the congregation may have been positive, but they may not have been within six feet. They were in proximity, as the state wants to call it. And then they kind of give that catch-all, other duties as required. If the, there's an option where this county health department may have the option, depending on the situation, the conditions, to determine whether or not someone should be quarantined. So, they kind of give us that ability as well.
Quarantine, three days.
I'm going to go over that in just a second. It depends on whether they're ill or not. Just to kind of finish up the order, a court order has some little teeth to it. The public health, the board of health can issue civil penalties up to $200 a day. And the district attorney can charge them with a misdemeanor. Also, I want to point out that if we isolate and quarantine, public health law requires the counties to provide a responsibility level of care. I'm going to go into, it's a broad definition. So, for the most part, if someone comes home and they have to be, or someone has to be quarantined or isolated, our first prior, our first choice will be to have them do that in their home, if at all possible. My staff will be going to their home to determine the appropriateness of the home for isolation and quarantine. And we have a series of factors like separate, separate room, bathrooms, those type of things that we'll go through. If we determine that the home is not a good place for quarantine or isolation, for example, if it's a one-bedroom apartment with several people, we are responsible for finding another location, either for the quarantined person or for the family members. So, most likely, we would leave the family member there if we could, and then house the, the family members who aren't sick somewhere else. But we would be responsible for making those arrangements. We also will assess and address any of their personal needs or services they may be receiving currently. And these are the types of things that we're going to have to address. When I said broad definition of care, we're going to have to address housing, food, pharmacy, childcare, arrangements for work, school, compensation, medical care, pet care, caregiver support. We'll be assessing their needs and we have to figure out, make arrangements for those things. So, if a person's in quarantine where they're not ill, but they've been potentially exposed, if they become ill while they're in quarantine, we, we have an action plan in place with those individuals that will talk about how we're coordinating them getting to a healthcare facility or provider's office for testing. Because at this point, we don't know what they have. We just know they've become ill. So we'll get them tested and treated and evaluated. We'll, it'll indicate where they are going to be going for that examination and testing. If the person, if it's a serious emergency where their health is really severe, they just need to call 911. We've been working with emergency management 911. There's guidance that the 911 staff has to facilitate those type of calls. And in non-emergency, we're asking them to call us. And we will coordinate transportation and making sure the hospitals or the provider who's going to be doing the exam or testing is notified. In some instances, if they're well enough, they can drive themselves. So, you know, it's those type of things that we'll discuss with them. For the mandatory quarantine, this kind of gets lower into your question. The mandatory quarantine and isolation, we will be visiting them every day. My staff will be going to their house daily to check on them. We do that, we stagger the times, so it's not always the same time. We want to make sure they're staying in their home. And we will also be contacting them at least once a day electronically, through Skype. Preferably something that we can see them, so we know they're in the home. They're just not texting us. And then for individuals who are isolated, meaning that they were sick with COVID-19, tested positive, in order to release them from isolation, it has to be at least seven days since they tested positive, their initial tests were positive. Their fever has to have gone away and is not due to taking fever-reducing medication. Their improved, their signs and symptoms have to improve. And they have to have negative results tests for nasopharyngeal and oral pharyngeal, pharyngeal basically nose and throat swabs, taken 24 hours apart. So those will be the conditions to release them. There's now a real timeframe on that, other than if they pass those, then we can release them from isolation. On quarantine side, if, we will be visiting them initially to assess their, their home conditions for quarantine. We'll also be asking them to sign a voluntary agreement that, which kind of gives the expectations if you're self-quarantining. It's not binding contract, but it kind of educates them and kind of gets a commitment that they'll sign something, say, we're willing to abide by this. For someone there, if they're...
They go nowhere, right?
Pardon? Yeah, I mean, they could probably go outside, walk around the house, but... Yeah, we would ask them not to do stuff like that. We would check on them electronically daily. And after 14 days, if they haven't shown any symptoms, they would be released from quarantine. If they become ill during that, then it changes everything. And then the community mitigation strategies are things such as school closures. That's going to be our, our tabletop tomorrow with the schools to kind of walk through, when does the school get closed, who closes it, things like that. We'll have discussions about that. It may be to modify or postpone mass gatherings. We have graduations coming up. Things like that need to be considered. We have the antique festival. You know, this is probably still going to be going on around that time. Those type of things need to be thought of and we think of what we're going to do. Social distancing, you know, keeping more than six feet apart from people that might be ill. On telecommuting, we're pushing, we push some stuff out to employers. Things that they need to be thinking about. Can people work at home? Can they telecommute? Other things that they can do to limit a lot of the person-to-person contact. I'm going to lead you with this, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dan. Our public health website, county web, on the county's main page, you'll see two things on the, on the left-hand side. In the middle, you'll see a button that says "Novel Coronavirus." You can click on that, or there's an alert, public health alert bar across the top. Either one, you click on those, it'll take you to our department website with a lot more detailed information on coronavirus. Information changes hourly, but we try to keep this as up to date as possible. We're doing it at least daily, if not more than once a day. And at that point, I'm going to turn it over to Dan.
Eric has done a great job with his team at public health before we went on with Dan. Eric has given a full call every morning at 9:00. And the governor's office takes a roll call to make sure we're there. And he calls in at 3:00. And Mark has a call at 3:00 to check in and make sure everything's okay with the governor's office. with the governor's office. As everybody knows, we do things good in Madison County, we do things well. Thanks to folks like Eric, and our employees and our team. Thanks, Eric Broyer.
Well, if I could interject on that, too. I think I sent you a personal email. We went through a meeting in Albany last week. I'm not gonna talk about the meeting in Albany.
There's no state that's dysfunctional, we already know that.
Yeah, I meant the state, yes. But we had a lot of conversation with the counties, and some of the challenges that they've had with their leadership, just the health department's being able to do things. I just want to express my gratitude to this leadership here. You make my, doing my job a lot easier, so thank you for your, your support on that.
Let me ask a question just before Eric leaves. So, you mentioned, you know, tabletops with all these other groups. What about the, our Madison County employees who are having regular contact with people out there? You know, we get all sorts of people, meeting people every... What, what's, do we have a plan, or are we instructed in work with our employees about if they are feeling sick and all that bad? And such things?
The answer, the answer is yes. We will be doing that, we are doing that. I mean, we're thinking of, for example, with our partner meeting next week, with a group like DSS that has a lot of interaction with the public, we want them to be at the table on that. But we're also working with Mark and Eileen and personnel to look at us as an employer on things that we can do. So, yes, that's being addressed.
Okay, so, I just want to hit you guys real quick with emergency declarations and emergency orders. You know, this is, this is a situation that's in front of us. However, what I'm gonna go over could address floods and any type of disaster, we'll get into it real quick. So I'll do it, we'll go through quickly. We're gonna talk about what is a disaster, what's your authority, what's a state emergency deck, and then what are emergency orders. So, the emergency planning guide for local officials is put out by New York State. If anyone wants a copy of that, I can get you one. They define a disaster as the occurrence of or imminent threat of widespread or severe damage, injury, or loss of life or property resulting from any natural or man-made causes. That's a mouthful. I appreciate that. We'll go into what exactly that means. Types of disasters, natural emergencies, that can be snow, ice, earthquake, flood, forest fire, you name it, we've all been through these things. Conflict emergencies, terrorism, shootings, civil unrest. Technological emergencies, which are structure failures, transportation accidents, you know, plane crashes, things like that. Industrial accidents, water, air contamination. Then pandemic emergencies, a disease outbreak, which is what we're talking about here. So we're not in a pandemic at this point, so we're not truly in a pandemic emergency, but we are operating. Eric mentioned he's operating with FLO ICS, which is Incident Command System. We're operating as if it's an emergency at this point. So you supervisors, what's your legal authority? Mayors, if there's mayors in the room. New York State Executive Law, Article 2B, if you haven't read it, you should read it. This provides chief executive with emergency authorities. Who is the chief executive? Madison County, the board of supervisors, John, Chair John Becker is the chief executive of the county. In the city of Oneida, it's Mayor Helen Acker. In the towns, it's town supervisors. In the villages, it's village mayor. You're the chief executive. So Article 2B refers to you, your authority. Article 2B goes into state of emergency declaration. Everybody here is, we're under a state of emergency. What does that mean? Well, it doesn't mean a whole lot on its own. The chief executive may proclaim this. He can proclaim it for part of or all of his or her jurisdiction. So, a mayor can proclaim it for the village or just a part of the village, they can't go beyond it. Supervisor can do the town, which includes a village if you have a village, but can't go beyond it. Board chair can go with the county or part of the county. So it's, it's kind of stages up. The governor can do part of the state or all of the state, right? It keeps them building up. State of emergencies can be declared in the event of reasonable apprehension of immediate danger or disaster, rioting, catastrophe, or similar, similar public emergency upon finding of the chief executive. So it's not in the event, it's also, also reasonable apprehension of. So you can do it in advance, if you're concerned about something happening in advance, but it has to be reasonable. You define what that means. State of emergency remains in effect for a period not to exceed thirty days. We don't, we can't just put a state of emergency out there, it's forever, it expires in thirty days, unless it's rescinded by the chief exec. You can also, the chief exec can also issue an extension, thirty-day increments at a time. State of emergency proclamations, this, I declare a state of emergency, there's a form we gotta fill out, we got paperwork to do on everything, it's New York State. All that does is allow you the authority to promulgate emergency orders. That's all a state of emergency does. You, you declare a state of emergency, then you have emergency orders that go along with it. They're separate, but they're tied together.
Dan, would that be like things like state of emergency, stuff like that?
Yep, exactly. So, an emergency order can only be promulgated following the state of emergency declaration, and only by the chief executive who made that declaration. So if, if John Becker declares a state of emergency, and a supervisor in that town thinks that, oh, I need an emergency order in my town, they have to do their own declaration for that to happen. Only the person who did, made the declaration can promulgate emergency orders. They're issued to protect life, property, and bring the emergency situation under control. They can establish a curfew, they can prohibit or control pedestrian or vehicular traffic, they can suspend local law, not state law, they can suspend local law, they can, ordinances, regulations, those kind of things, or close a place of assembly, which we've talked a little bit about. A violation of emergency order is considered a Class B misdemeanor. We all know what that means these days, but it is, it is a crime. Emergency orders expire in five days unless rescinded by the chief exec or the legislative body. So there's, that's your catch, your checks and balances there. If necessary, after five days, a new emergency order can be promulgated in five-day increments. So the state of emergency is a thirty-day thing, emergency orders are five-day things, but they can continue on. So, with this particular emergency, here's the plan that, that we're suggesting. It's truly not a pandemic emergency, it's close, it's being managed by the Madison County Health Department. This, they're in charge, they're in command. The health department has a responsibility to monitor the entire, the emergency for the entire county, right? Eric Price is, is commander of this potential emergency situation. The emergency operations center is operating at a light capacity at the moment. We stand ready to grow the capacity in functionality if it becomes necessary. Our staff is supporting the health department right now in their operations, anything they need, we're here to help them through. We also have what's called a JEC, Joint Information Center, that's operational right now in a virtual environment, but it's operational. The PIO Samfield is coordinating all public information to ensure the content is consistent, which is important right now. You've all seen the news, there's lots of different information out there. We want our information to be consistent and accurate, right? So that's what we're working on. And if we get into the need for a state of emergency and, and emergency orders, right now, we're asking that all those things be coordinated through the EOC, through the county, because we'll likely do it as a county level. This is a county health event, so if you have the need, something in your local community you're thinking about, please coordinate that through us, or if you do any declaration outside of this, it's always good to, to work through us, so we can help make sure that you do the proper paperwork and do the right things. So, that's what we have going on with that. Any questions with that? Great. Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, I got one.
Sure.
If, if someone approached us and said they were, what should our response be? Should be contact public count?
I'm gonna give it to the guy in charge.
So if an individual comes to you and says, we're sick, what should we do? First thing we, first thing we would do, we would tell them, they can call their provider. The providers have a series of questions, they'll walk them through to see if it's relevant for COVID-19. Or you can direct them to call the health department, we would do the same, same type of thing. We would ask that they call first before they go anywhere. Don't just show up to the hospital, the emergency room, just don't show up to your providers, because if you are ill and you do have COVID-19, you're now potentially exposing other people. So, we would, unless they're, unless it's an emergency and they need to be transported right away, you know, call one, 911, but otherwise, have them call their provider, call us first.
Provider being their doctor?
Their doctor, their doctor, yeah.
Eric, is the path we'll get this sent to us?
Yes.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions? Okay, you Ben?
Yeah, I know, you know, our town, we're gonna be meeting tomorrow, and one of the things we want to do is make sure our website is, you know, is linked to the Madison County website, just making sure that everybody's on the same page, so the information, everybody's getting the same information, we're gonna be major...
That's a good idea.
Yeah, and we've been talking to Colgate a little bit, because they're, I think they're about to make a declaration soon, telling their students what they want them to do in terms of spring break. I'm hoping that they're going to be telling them to not go, and if they go, to know that they're not coming back for like fourteen days, because, I mean, and I, we're not alone, Morrisville and, and...
CANS are doing the same thing.
Same issues, that they're gonna bring COVID-19 back to our community faster than anybody else's, so I just, you know, we're, you know, just aware of it, and I'm sure you're, I know you're aware of it, I mean...
Yeah, we've been in constant contact with the colleges, health centers, for that very reason.
Any other questions? Yep, Joel's got a question.
Is there any advice for any county employees who plan on attending conferences out of Madison County? Like, just besides the normal precautions, washing hands, stay with people, is there anything else that we should...
I mean, I, I mean, it depends on where they're going for the conference. If they're going to Seattle, they may want to reconsider, or they may want to change plans or what have you. If they're going to, I mean, right now, thirty-six states have a case. If it's in one of those cases, I mean, even in those particular states, like I said, it's person to per, you have to come into contact with the person that's affected. I think it would be a case-by-case basis, depending on where they're going. If they're going to a state that doesn't have a case right now, I really wouldn't worry about it. I mean, we know that, like Morrisville has, a lot of students that come back from New York City, they're, you know, we're not necessarily providing them to go, but, but we're asking them, if they go, to self-monitor after they get back for fourteen days, you know, are you, do you have any symptoms or things? If so, then notify us, if not, then it should be fine.
Okay. Is that correct? All right. Thanks, Eric, thank you, Dan, appreciate it. Okay, from one great subject to the next. Next, we'll talk about Medicaid.